We're gonna get the Pearl City Neighborhood Board Meeting started here. It's Tuesday, October 22nd. We're here at Momilani Community Center. Wide open theater type atmosphere with fresh air coming through. First thing on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Could everybody please stand? And we're honored to have our Cub Scout Pack 75 with Cub Master Jansen Lim with the leadership. Can somebody give a microphone to the boys that are going to say the pledge?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's give him a hand. Thank you. Okay, and we've got some speaking rules for those that attended tonight. Anyone wishing to speak is asked to open the list of participants and click on the raise hand for everybody, it's virtual, by their name. When recognized by the chair, address comments directly to the chair. Remarks should not exceed more than three minutes. Please cancel the raise hand icon on your computer there when you're done speaking. Presentations must be kept under 10 minutes. We got one presentation today. The chat box can also be used to ask simple questions to our NCO rep. And board members are required to keep their video active during the board meeting. Okay, and recordings for the board meetings can be found on YouTube. And also, we keep our documents on Google Drive. The board may take action on any agenda item as required by the state sunshine law. Specific issues not noted on agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. Board actions such as draft resolutions and outgoing letters will be posted for the public on our Google Drive. Okay, all right, moving on. Everybody has signed in for public record. And Hanson, if you could please do a roll call.
Want to call your name, please say here. A guard.
Here.
Hey Wong.
Here.
Doran. It's not here. Inoi.
Here.
Brendan Lee. Weber. Miyazano Junior.
Yep.
Smith.
Here.
Taki Uchi.
Here.
Here.
Okay. Velasco. Okay. Evere. Everyone's here.
We're missing three. We still have a quorum. Okay, first lineup here on the agenda for public safety reports, we've got our Honolulu Fire Department. Thank you, gentlemen.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us. So I'm just gonna go over, I guess, last neighborhood board in August. There were some questions that never got answered, so they got back to us with the answers. So the first question, what was the location of the vehicle for pedestrian incident reported in August? Says 2025, I'm assuming they mean 24. The location was Ho'olana Street and I'm on a home road. I don't know if anyone here asked that question, but here's your answer. Next question was, why does HFD not have a fixed wing aircraft to aid in water drops for wildfires? And per our HR department, the HFD determined that it does not have an operational need to purchase fixed wing aircraft. Our current fleet of aircraft, including a new twin-engine helicopter, is sufficient to effectively respond to wildfires here on the lawn. And with that, for our stats, I'm gonna pass the mic over to our guy Jacob.
Evening, my name is Jacob. We have our incident statistics for September of 2024. For fires, we had zero structure fires. We had four wildland and brush fires. We had three nuisance fires, which is just a rubbish fire outside of a vehicle or a structure. We had one cooking fire and we had seven activated alarms, but no fire. For our emergencies, we had 131 medical emergencies. We had one motor vehicle collision with a pedestrian and seven motor vehicle crashes and collisions. Zero mountain rescues and zero ocean rescues. And zero hazmat incidents. Last part, just some fire safety tips. Smoke alarms. Making sure you have working smoke alarms at home and make sure you install them in every bedroom, outside each separate sleeping area like a hallway and on each level of the home. Making sure you test your smoke alarms at least once a month by pushing the test button and making sure you replace all smoke alarms when they're 10 years old or stop responding when tested. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Any question? Oh, sorry, any questions?
Yeah, so board members, any questions? And thank you for the follow-up answers for the board. Any other questions for our fire department? Hey, anybody virtual? You're none, how about public? Any questions? And I want to thank you all for your quick responses at Wild Guard Sky B the last week here for a few of our senior citizens that definitely needed help. You responded six times and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's no questions, guys. Take care. Okay, moving on, Honolulu Police Department. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Lieutenant Kyony Hong. Newer to the district, so it's my first board meeting with y'all. Looking forward to working with you into the future. Going over the stats for September compared to August. Motor vehicle thefts, there were nine compared to six. Burglaries, five compared to two. Thefts, there were 27 as well as 27 in August. Car break-ins or unauthorized entry to motor vehicles, there were six in September and 10 in August. Total cost for service was 1,495 in September compared to 1,493 in August. There are no real cases of notoriety, but I did notice there's about three stolen vehicle arrests. So one was a moped that had a defaced VIN that was later identified and the suspect was arrested for unauthorized control of a propelled vehicle. There was one other one that was a follow-up from another district that I believe a GPS device was pinging in the car, so they sent the Pearl City officers to the location. They did locate the car as well as two occupants and also made an arrest. Regarding the safety tip of the month, says Halloween is on Thursday, October 31st. Make sure your child is visible and costumes and masks should fit well to avoid block vision or trip hazards. Carefully check treats for tampering. I was notified that at the last meeting, there were some speeding concerns, so there were dedicated teams to address speeding in the LeHua Ave, Kahele, Olaulea and Children's House areas. The stats between September 14th to October 14th, there were 114 total citations given. So there's kind of a lot. So otherwise, I don't know if there was any other follow-ups that you needed. If not, I can address any questions you have.
All right, Lizette, and thank you HPD responding to not only the board, but the community concerns about all the speeding that was going on. You guys, it appears you guys did a really good full court press to try to mitigate that and send a clear message to our residents to start slowing down, especially around our elementary schools. Okay, board members, any questions for HPD? Rodney? Oh, I can't see them. Who is it? Junior, go ahead.
Um, are you on resident on Tuliana Place? Uh, cul-de-sac? That's where I'm parking in there. Been complaining for years and I'm glad they're still parking there, so you can just check it out.
Is that like a no parking area with signs, you know?
Cul-de-sac's are not parking, right?
Yeah, most times, but then it helps with signs because if they don't have signs, what I would recommend and I would pass it on is to have the city put up signs because that helps clear, you know, no parking, just like over here, no parking from here to there. It just helps the public understand. A lot of times it's residents too and parking is sometimes hard.
I'll go check it out, but if you can check, take a look one person.
Okay.
All right, we'll check.
Hey Rodney.
What is the ruling on that?
Yeah, so signs help, but then I know whenever there's a cul-de-sac, the reason why they don't want people parking is for emergency vehicles, fire trucks, ambulances to turn around, even sometimes garbage trucks, right? They cannot turn around. But yeah, oftentimes, because then if you have signs, it's a lot easier for people to understand. If there's no signs, what usually happens, especially if it's residents who live in the area, is the officers run the car, find out where they live, try to give them opportunity to move. And if they do move, they'll be the problem for that day, you know? With signs, it's easier for our officers to just give the citation because it's obvious, you know, there's a sign right there. There's a check block for was there a sign? And then it's less, I guess, it's easier for the officers to issue citations when there's obvious signs in the area.
Um, you please get sign. No more. We talk to the guys, we put up in a state, we figure out.
That would help, yeah. But still, yeah, it still could be a violation.
Are they, um...
One more.
Are they allowed, the residents of the cul-de-sac, to park in front of their residents' one car, parallel to the curb?
So we would have to look at each circumstance and that's why most cul-de-sacs do have signs, even though it's only the residents in that area. Because if they are not, say it's a huge cul-de-sac, right? And there is room for vehicles to turn around, we have discretion not to tag residents parking where, you know, their house is. So it's kind of discretionary. I would have to look up if there is an exact ROH or revised ordinance or a law that says no parking in cul-de-sacs.
Yeah.
And they would just have to, like I said, when we get the ticket book, if it says sign there, we just check block. If not, we'd look up the ordinance and find a specific ordinance for that particular violation.
Yeah, because I seen it was also prevalent in Halava Manor. You guys are like 10 across the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, those obviously are probably gonna be violations.
I think there was also another question that I brought up last week with Mr. Iwasaki about the curb parking. What was that street above the Highlands? Yeah, Maimai Street, because I guess, you know, when the children are walking to school, they're actually, you know, even on No'ailani, you know, they gotta walk on a street, so it puts them in danger. Also too, and this one is kind of a catch on this one, but in the afternoon, when parents are picking up their children from PC, Pearl City Peaches, they actually wrap around onto No'ailani. So I don't know if there's some enforcement that needs to be done over there, but and like I said, sometimes these people are gonna hate me, but on No'ailani, there is parking on the easement that most of the residents do. But are they allowed to do double parking on the easement and on the road?
Well, that one, no more paved sidewalk, you mean? Like there's like an unimproved sidewalk.
It's an unimproved sidewalk.
Yeah, so technically for wheelchairs as well as pedestrian access, there should be 36 inches, which is like three feet. So if there's not three feet from the edge of the property line to the start of the road, technically that would be a parking violation.
Now, like I said, they're gonna hate me, but you know, some of them are double parking, so you got one on the easement and then one right outside on the road.
Yeah.
So right up on a stoplight, when you get two lanes to turn, the thing negates it right there.
What is the best I always say is that if you do observe a violation that may be hazardous, call 911, meet with the officer, point out the violation, and then there's a more likely chance the officer will cite. If it's anonymous calls and then we realize it's somebody just on the side of their own house and there's no like wheelchair waiting to cross or anything, they may use the friction. Yeah, so waiting and talking to the officer and explaining the circumstances would help.
Yeah, I just wanted to see what the ruling on that one was.
Technically, you're not supposed to.
Okay.
Okay, I don't see anybody virtually there with hands up, so I didn't see there. Go ahead.
Briefly, I think it would be good to know what, have a breakdown that says calls for service. I mean, you know, we would understand your work better with advertising.
What types of calls?
Yeah, yeah, what, you know, the kind of general classification just.
If you did wanna see, it is on the crime mapping, most likely, and it'll show. But yeah, I can ask. I don't pull up the stats personally, but I can try to request if they have a little more breakdown. I think those are.
Thank you for the, like the one sheet that we got today. Yeah, if you have five major categories, just curious. Thank you.
Yeah, Dan, all the neighborhood boards have requested additional items to be reported, but HPD is, you know, drew a line on where that should be and we just need to do our own homework in some places. But I'll tell you what, I'm glued to crimemapping.com and for my own homeowners association. Anything that happens within three blocks, a newsletter goes out for a neighborhood security watch alert, especially for burglaries. You could track the burglaries, you could see where they're going. And also the unattended thefts, I mean, in vehicles, those. Okay, community, any questions for HPD? See you none, looks like getting off early. I do want to communicate with you later data. One thing I do want to mention, you know, I've lived in Hawaii for 37 years, never had to worry about my wife parking in a food land or Safeway or anything. But what I'm seeing now today and what we saw would happen at the swap meet the other day with those young kids stealing gold jewelry, walking in with face mask, with gloves, and nobody recognized that. And of course, what usually happens, well, we can't do anything anyway. We gotta call HPD. It's usually it's too late. But I tell you, even today, I saw two suspicious activities with a guy in Milani at the close to where the wife's office storage is. I dropped my wife off for church and he's sitting there with a full ski mask on and his car is parked there unattended. He was up to no good.
What we always recommend is always be a good witness. Call it in and I always recommend meeting with the officer and pointing out what you observed, as well as license plate, description of the car, occupants and whatnot. And then when you call 911, somebody's gonna respond. But if you're gonna meet with them, they'll probably have more information to follow up.
Yeah, but the bottom line is we're no longer safe anymore. You have no idea that the individual is probably homeless on a bicycle coming up to you in the parking lot, may have a weapon, some type. And it's happened to my wife already and she did the right thing. Don't speak English. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to a community.
So these guys, these kids, when you guys arrest them like that, they're still getting let go. What you guys doing with the court system?
For juveniles, there's something called serious juvenile offenders, which means they would have to have so many convictions prior to them being charged unless the crime is so severe that they can be charged immediately, which that usually is like a class A felony, robbery first, murder, attempted murders. So yeah.
What's the order? The ones, not kids, like 18 and above.
So 18 and above, it depends on the type of crime and with the prosecutor's office. So there is a charging criteria. So different types of crime get charged immediately. Other types of crime, as you hear RPI, that's released pending investigation, which means they get released for further investigation and they get a court date later.
What else I'm trying to get at is, are they getting charged? Or I mean, you know what I mean, or just getting let go and let go and let go and everybody getting.
So like at another meeting, similar, when you see those types of offenders, say 45, 100 arrests, that kind of tells you the police are doing their job. They got arrested 45 to 100 times. So maybe it's the next level that, you know, citizens gotta go to and ask what's going on.
I know, just gonna get to the next level, that's all.
Yes.
Sure, so, um, like I told you guys a couple years ago, good guys gonna going to jail because the court system not doing a job. Because if, if I was there to help me, I would have done something.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? I had enough already, nobody do nothing. The court system will do nothing, but the time you call you guys, the guys is gone.
You know, just a tip for what I tell my family is make sure you're situationally aware, transitional spaces between your car, your house, your house, I mean, your store and your car. I would say carry defensive tools, get trained, pepper spray. Now we have concealed carry, that's up to you, law-abiding citizens. But you know what I mean? There are defensive tools and unfortunately, that's the world we live in, right? But that's your life at stake, your family's life. So sometimes you do have to take it upon yourself to be more aware and prepared, just like hurricanes, we prepare, right?
You guys doing a good job.
Thank you.
We need the next level for today, so thank you.
Thank you.
Rodney, last question.
Um, so there were, do you guys also report on, there was an accident up at Komo Maia and I'm on a home road recently? So and I think Guy will, you know, agree with me on this one because we talked to the lady from the traffic division. But I think we'd like to hear a little bit, you know, more elaboration on some of the accidents that are going on in certain areas, whether or not they were at a traffic stop or stoplight. Because in that way, we, you know, when it comes time to, they're gonna do that complete streets pretty soon over here. So, you know, we'd like to get some teeth in on that one and, you know, put our two cents inside there so that they, you know, kind of look things at what we're talking about.
So that one, that was one in early morning, kind of like 5:30? Yeah. So I responded to that one. So that one is kind of interesting you say that, and maybe this can help with your project. But there was a car going up Komo Maia and a car reversing out of their driveway. So from my observations, it appeared there's a little crest in the road prior to those driveways. And maybe that crest in the road causes those drivers to not see cars reversing out of their driver until it's too late. So that might be good for those reorganizing the streets and whatnot. So and what I've heard is that was a second incident that occurred in one of those driveways. So it may be a road problem, engineering problem or whatnot that they could look into.
Okay, well, sir, thank you so much and we look forward to... So you'll be attending the follow-on meetings then?
Yeah, it's either me or the other lieutenant. There's two of us, so it's whoever's working.
You're always welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for guarding for us.
Great, thank you.
Okay, questions from the audience? Okay, moving on, are there any public concerns anybody wants to bring up? Okay, see you none, we're moving along. And we are honored here today because we have the Director of Environmental Services, Mr. Babcock, welcome. And sir, I didn't get a presentation mailed to us, so.
I have a handout.
Okay. And everybody knows what a dumpster looks like. Well, welcome.
Thank you Chair of Array, board members and members, citizen members of the public. Glad to be here this evening. Thank you for inviting. My name is Roger Babcock. I'm Director of the Department of Environmental Services for the city. We take care of wastewater and refuse. So we collect the green, gray and blue carts from your houses. We have the convenience centers, transfer stations, H Power and the landfill on the refuse side. On wastewater side, we've got 2,100 miles of pipelines, 50,000 manholes, 72 wastewater pump stations and nine treatment plants all over the island. You folks are served by the Sand Island, sorry, Honolulu wastewater treatment plant out in Eva Beach. So I am glad to be here. I have to, I wish I had better news, but I'm here to talk about sewer fee increase that we need to have in order to continue the service that we provide and provide for a bunch of additional things that we need to do to construct. So this is about a, as you'll see there, oh, and so for everybody else and anybody watching online, this information is available on our webpage, this exact flyer, as well as additional information. Our webpage is www.honolulu.gov, like all the rest of the city, slash ENV. And so you can find this information there. At the top of that, there's a list of hot topics and one of them goes to this page. And just so you know, this, the mayor and us, we're holding a press conference tomorrow afternoon at 1:30 with all the media to be, you know, announcing this to everybody else. So you're kind of getting it a little bit, a little bit ahead of everybody else. And I'll present, you know, I'll kind of go through some of this and then be, you know, able to answer any questions that you have in addition to, you know, what I present here. And I'm sorry that we don't have this for everybody, but I'll walk through it. So we are planning adjustments to the sewer fees beginning July 1st of this coming year in 2025. So we call that fiscal year '26. So the fees that Mayor has approved to go forward to council or essentially approval by the council is for a 10-year period. So we're proposing a 10-year rate package increase. And I'll explain what those are here in a second. There is a couple of important things that we want to talk about. We're gonna be changing the structure of the bill, the way it's calculated, and that's gonna allow greater control of customer of your own bill. In other words, it will reward water conservation to a much greater extent than is possible today with the current structure. In addition, we're instituting a customer assistance program, which is the first time any city utilities have done this. And that will allow lower income folks to get a credit on their bill to assist. So I'll explain that a little more as we go along. But as I mentioned, we do take care of sewer services for the city. That's everybody except for those that live on a military base, they've got their own treatment plants. And quite a few of the people that live in East Honolulu also have a private wastewater treatment plant that services them out there. But otherwise, everybody else is on the city system and pays the same sewer fees. So the first question is, you know, why are sewer fees going up? The, you know, we have been able to maintain the current sewer fees unchanged since July 1st of 2016. So it's already eight years with no sewer fee increase and there's still essentially another half a year before. So it would have been nine years by the time the new fee kicks in. As everybody knows, all fee, all costs have gone up during that time period. There's been inflation. We pay more for fuel, just like everybody does. Wages have gone up, some, you know, along with the city employees, just like everybody else. And all of our costs, electricity has gone up and everything like that. But we've been very efficient at what we've done and there were sewer fee increases in the past, but this allowed us to maintain this for this period of time. But our operation and maintenance costs, you know, have gone up. And in addition, construction costs have gone up. So sewer fee also pays for not just operation and maintenance, which is people's wages and all that kind of stuff, but also our construction projects. And we have something called a consent decree that was signed in 2010. It's a 25-year agreement in federal court to do certain projects over a 25-year period from 2010 to 2035. So we're a little bit more than halfway through that at this point. There's 11 years left and the largest project that needs to be done for that consent decree is currently started, but there's a big part left that we have to fund. And that's the final, the last phase of the upgrade of the Sand Island wastewater treatment plant. $2.5 billion altogether for that project. Part of it's already underway, about $650 million is already started, but there's a big part, $1.8 billion, that's still to come. But that's only really part of everything that we have to do. As you'll see in the figure, we have $10.1 billion of work that needs to be done between 2025 and 2040. So as you know, that's basically about the same size as rail and I think a lot of people don't realize how big the sewer program really is. But that's what we're faced with and in order to accomplish that, we really do have to raise the fees. And it's not, as I mentioned, it's not just about that one project. There's lots of modernization, replacement and upgrade of existing systems so that they don't fail. When they fail, they cost a lot more to fix and upgrade than if we do them proactively. So that's. So that's what we, that's what we do. That's what we specialize in. So the, what the actual fee increase is, as I mentioned, is 10-year package. There's six years where each year it would increase by 9% per year. And then the remaining four years, the increases get smaller, eight, seven, six and five. So that's what we're looking at for the 10-year package. The reason to do 10 years is it allows us to get all the way through that fini- finish the consent decree work. And then we'll see much more moderate, you know, fees into the future. So it allows to kind of see the light at the end of the tunnel and get through that whole thing as opposed to just going partway and still having to go, come back to council and reintroduce more increases to finish the work. So that adds up to a total of 115%. So sewer bills are going to double. And that sounds like a lot, but it's actually less than was predicted in 2010 when the consent decree was signed. They were predicting that the bills were going to triple. So we have been very, very efficient and, uh, it is also important to note that we do a lot of projects to increase efficiency and save, uh, and use lower electricity, uh, going into the future, which are permanent costs that continue to get larger as we go along. So in here you'll see example bills for what that will look like for the average customer. So there's dollar amounts in here. Um, currently, the average customer, which, uh, is paying about $110 a month. What do I mean by average customer? Your sewer bill is based on your water use because a lot of the water that you use ends up being sewage. You get a 20% credit. Means that of the water you use, you're automatically credited 20% and say, that's not sewage. You're using that in your yard. Whether or not you use it, you're still getting the 20% credit. So your sewer bill is based on 80% of your water bill. Right? So the water bill is from border water supply. They have the meter, they read the meter. There isn't a separate meter to measure sewage. We measure water going into the house only. Um, so the sewer bill consists of two components, a base charge and a volumetric charge. The base charge is a fixed fee. Currently, that's $77.55. It's been that number since July 1st of 2016. Everybody pays that same amount, $77.55. And on top of that, you're paying for, based on the volume of water that you use. Get the 20% credit and then you multiply the number of thousands of gallons by $4.63 per thousand gallons. And so that's what's illustrated in your little table, a 77.55 plus $33.34. And that's for the average user, which uses 9,000 gallons a month, minus 20% is 7,200 gallons, times divided by 1,000 is 7.2, times $4.63 is how you get to $33, okay? So that adds up to $110. That's the current bill. And it's going to increase 9% per year over the first six years and then a little less in the, in the outgoing years. So what are we doing? We're doing two things that are really important to address affordability, right? So I was going to say, how are we going to afford this? Um, so one of the things is the current fee structure, about 70% of your bill is fixed. So even if you were to use zero water or just 100 gallons in a month, you'd still pay the $77.55. Reusing your water use has very little impact on your bill. So based on, uh, our advisory group that we've had been going for six months and a lot of people, members from the community and business said, how can we make this give people better control of their bill? So we're going to be transitioning to a more 50-50 bill. And you can kind of notice that if you go down this chart, you'll see that the volumetric part is larger than even the base fee. So that means that in the first four years, um, the base charge doesn't go up at all. It stays at around $77 or $74. And that's good if you don't use much water. Or you decide you want to use less water. You can make it so that your bill, you know, doesn't go up because you have more control. A bigger percentage of your bill is based on your water use. So that's what, that's what you can do, uh, with this, with this switch to 50-50. So that's one thing that we're doing to try to, you know, make it so people have more control over the bill and can then, um, moderate the, uh, the increase. In addition, we also have, um, a program for, um, low, lower income customers. And we've modeled this program after the city's rental and utility relief program, RURP, which has been going on since, since COVID. They've distributed, uh, there was federal, federal money. They distributed several hundred million dollars through this program. And it's based on income qualification. So it's based on 80% of area median income, um, to qualify. And then, um, you get a, essentially in this case, you're going to get a credit towards your base charge. It's going to be $20 to $25 a month. Uh, with this, we're, and we're, we're going to fund this at $10 million a year, which is, um, you know, quite, quite a large amount. And, uh, that will allow, uh, uh, 30,000 to 40,000 homes to, to qualify, you know, for this, for this, um, this assistance. So those are, you know, some of the things, the things that we're doing. That's kind of the overview of the.
No, that's perfect.
Of the whole package. And I'd be happy to, you know, answer any questions your folks have.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Uh, really important information. This is being recorded on Lilo, so we'll get out, you know, we'll get out to the residents. But, um, yeah, we, we do need to educate everyone, especially townhomes. There's a lot of, uh, waste because everybody's on a common water system. They need to really control that. Uh, some of them actually metered all the units, but board members, any questions for Mr. Babcock? Go ahead.
Yes, um, you know, it would be very useful if there were kind of a map of Oahu that showed where you have, uh, available sewer capacity. Or so, for example, you could build affordable housing around. For example, I think you might be, there might have adequate sewer capacity up by Pearl City High School. A lot of state land up there. Some things could be done with that. Uh, I don't know, down by Pearl City Peninsula, maybe. Um, but, but, you know, you, you can get by with, uh, you know, a little water and a little electricity, but sewers, uh, um, um, you know, a major thing that's, you know, hard to do on your own.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. Thanks for that question. So, so we do have a sophisticated, uh, model of the entire sewer system, which, um, indicates its capacity for every single street and stuff in the, in the city, uh, the island wide. And we do use that whenever there's a, a building application, um, that comes in, comes into DPP. They check the model to see whether there's capacity. And there's a lot of capacity in general, you know, throughout, throughout the system. Uh, for example, at a smaller scale, like for ADUs. ADUs could, are, are acceptable just about anywhere. I mean, there's very few exceptions where there isn't some capacity on a given neighborhood street. So there's that. With respect to larger developments, they're coming to us all the time. Uh, there are lots of things proposed, uh, all over the place. And, um, for affordable housing and multifamily units and things like that. And, you know, for the most part, there is capacity. I mean, there are some exceptions, of course, um, in, in certain places where the sewer system is already sort of under capacity. Uh, and then we have to deny, or there are projects required to be able to enable those to happen. But, um, we're, the city is very, uh, uh, very, uh, pro, uh, affordable housing developments and will do what's necessary to try, you know, to make, to make those projects happen. Those are important.
Yeah, well, my daughter lives out in Makaha and has a cesspool.
Cesspool.
And, you know, it's a, it's a fairly urban area. And so I'm guessing that, um, wine and I coast might be a place where you need to do some, some investment.
Yeah, that's a good question. So that's called a sewer improvement district. And we have, um, the sewer, the sewer system is based around basins. So there's the Sand Island Basin, which really goes all the way from Waikiki to Red Hill. And then there's Honolulu, which is Red Hill out to, um, basically to, uh, Kauai, that kind of area. Then there's a little bit of a gap and then there's a wine and I treatment plant. And wine and I reaches a certain area, but it's really just wine and I, doesn't go past. And then we got Kalua and then there's whole North Shore where there's no sewers, no sewers at all. So all together, there's 8,000, 10,000 people on cesspools still. Um, but some folks are close to a sewer basin or even in a sewer, even in an existing sewer basin. And we have projects to get those people connected. Um, they are expensive and so we program them, program them in over time. Um, our biggest one right now is in Eva Beach, which is very close to a sewer. Sewers never put there, homes built in the seventies. And, uh, there's almost 1,000 homes. So that's our biggest sewer improvement district project that we have on the books now. Um, it's a $62 million project, um, because putting in sewers, you know, is expensive. Um, but I hear you. We got actually like 18 SID projects, which is sewer improvement. Some are very small, just a few homes. Some are 100, some are 24, you know, stuff like that. They're spread all over the, you know, all over the island.
Okay. Rodney, if you could hold, I got Guy next, two questions and then we're going to move on. Guy, go ahead. Guy, we can't hear you.
Yeah.
Muted.
So if the, uh, average customer now pays about $109, $110 per month at the end of the 10-year period, uh, what do you anticipate the, uh, cost will be?
Yeah, good question. So if that average customer didn't do anything to conserve water, uh, and wasn't eligible for the, uh, low income, uh, credit, they'd be paying $248 in, uh, beginning in 20, July 1 of 2034.
Wow. And so I guess the increases to take care of improvements, correct? Is that where the, uh, most of the bunny is going to be earmarked for?
Yeah, so it's operation and maintenance costs. Um, we have, um, working in the wastewater side, there's about 780 employees. Uh, we have treatment plant operators, we have truck drivers, we have mechanics and electricians and we have engineers as well, um, as well as secretary and human relations and all different kinds of people working, you know, on, for us. So that is a big part of the, about half of the annual operation costs. The other half is debt service. So we borrow money. We don't pay for very much, uh, construction with cash, only about 25% is cash. Um, the rest is with, uh, municipal tax-free bonds that we sell. And then we pay interest and principal on those over 30 years. So if we didn't do that, we'd have to have cash for everything. So sewer fees, the, the money that comes in for sewer fees, that's cash. Goes into an account, cash account, and we're spending that for all the operating costs. We can't spend bond money, 30-year money on operating costs. We have to spend cash. So you have to have cash for that, plus the debt service, plus some construction.
Okay, Rodney.
Um, on the, uh, lower income side with a fixed income, are the cupones, um, in that, uh, area? Can they qualify for that, uh, lower rate?
Absolutely, yes. So if you're on fixed income and you're below, uh, or, or anything and you're below the 80% AMI, area median income, which countywide is $100,000, a little over $100,000, um, then you potentially could qualify. The, um, this, this program that, uh, will be administered by, by a third party, uh, we will go through a selection process. Um, but the, uh, OER, Office of Economic Revitalization that ran the RURP, um, used, um, Catholic charities and, uh, council and native Hawaiian affairs. Uh, so one of those, you know, will probably win, you know, the contract. And they already know how to do it and have, um, you know, the, the database, you know, and stuff like that, do the outreach and help people apply. So we're hoping that it will be a fairly easy program for us to, to kind of resume, you know, in that way. And there's a lot of cupuna that we're able to, uh, participate in that.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good thing because I think there's a lot of them that don't know about it. So, you know, that would be a great thing for them. The other question I had was on gray water. Um.
It's a third question.
What's the status of gray water?
So gray water, as you know, is basically all water produced in the house other than toilets and the kitchen sink. Those are called black water. Everything else is gray water. So sinks, uh, dishwasher, washing machine, all that kind of stuff. That water can be separated. To, uh, protect your health and stuff like that, so you don't get sick and do, you know, do the wrong thing. Um, but that is possible, you know, to do, uh, currently. And, um, if you did that and it meant you use less water, that would mean, you know, you reduce your water bill and your, and your sewer bill.
And let alone would be green by now.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions from the community? Yep, you got one down there? Okay, go ahead, ID.
I just wanted to, um, comment on the, the AMI, or sorry, not the AMI, but the assistance program.
Yeah.
Um, it says $20 to $25 credit, which currently and for the next six years would be about a third of that fixed fee. But as we get forward to the end of the 10 years, it goes down to less than a quarter. Is that, is there any plan to adjust that based on the increasing fees? Or is this like going to be $20 to $25 even when the bills are much, much higher, almost double?
Yeah, you know, so I think we, we will have flexibility to, you know, to increase that depending on uh, how the program works out, the participation level and, um, and, and, and figuring those things out. There's, there's, there's some unknowns, I think, in terms of how, how we're going to get it to work. And also whether it's really going to get to the people who, who need it the most. Um, there are some really big challenges on trying to figure out how to do that. Um, right now, as we're conceiving the program, you would actually have to get a sewer bill in order to benefit. Um, and a lot of people don't get sewer bills that are, that are low income if you're a renter or other things. We haven't figured that out and actually it's a very difficult thing to figure out. Um, so we're going to, uh, start it and try and learn as we go and figure out what additional, you know, resources are needed to be able to get it out to the people who need it. So it's going to be, it's going to be an evolving program. That's the way RURP was too. They had to figure things out as we went along. Um, so, um, it's a new, it's a new thing. City hasn't tried to do anything like this before. So, um, but we're, we're hopeful that it will be successful and, and, uh, it, we, we would, uh, hopefully be able to grow it to meet the, the needs as they, as they arise.
All right, Junior.
Uh, just real fast. Odd question one. If I'm walking around Kakakau, it stinks. And when I go eat sushi down here, when the water curry hams, it stinks. Is that clear to the sewer system?
It is. Um, so sometimes at night mostly, um, it would, there would be sewer odors. Part of that is that the sewer system was expanded, um, in, you know, recent years, over actually the last couple of decades in the area and upsized a lot. So there's a lot of capacity to, uh, serve all the growth, you know, that's, that's happening in the area. And, and also just, you know, to upgrade the system. Um, and so what that means is it's kind of, uh, there are times when wastewater is kind of stagnant in, in the pipes. It's, it's sitting there, uh, and not flowing because there isn't, uh, a lot of sewage coming. And, uh, so, but as time, uh, goes on and there's more flow, then that should be, you know, that should be reduced. Um, we are pretty good at doing odor control at treatment plants because it's a facility that we can, you know, control. Uh, but the sewer system is harder because it's really big and there's pipes in every street. Uh, and so, and we, we can't seal the whole thing up. So, um, the, uh, yeah, so, yeah. Just so that helps.
Okay, that wraps it up. Uh, I've got, I want to thank you so much. It's really nice to have the directors come to our board meeting. But, uh, Roger, thank you so much. And I know for Pearl City, they're at, you know, I know what you're talking about, Junior. You know, when you talk about Kakakau, they build those high rises down there. When you drive in front, it smells so bad with the capacity. This is on a different issue. I'd like, if next couple of days, if you get a chance, we could talk. And that's for my townhome. And that's for my town home association rubbish pickup. So. All right, thank you.
I'd be happy to come back, you know, anytime in the future. I know other boards want us to come back on the customer assistance program, talk about that more when we have more details. Because we're gonna need outreach to get people to, to sign up, you know, for that program. And so these forums are good voice of the community to be able to, you know, help get the word out. So thank you very much.
All right, Roger. Take care. Thank you. Okay, moving on to board business. I want to thank all of you that have worked with the vice chair in providing inputs as we compile our requirements for Pearl City for legislative priorities for 2025. Our vice chair is ill today. She couldn't make it. And if there's no objections, I want to defer this to the November meeting. We'll have to get it done November because the legislature will be going back into session in January. So we need to get this to them so they can start working on their bills. But after there are no objections, we'll defer this to the November meeting. Moving on, Mr. Jeff Hickman representing Governor Green. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair, Board. I'm sorry I missed the last meeting, but I'm here this, this month. So I'm here open. Do you have any questions for the governor or the state?
Rodney, you got a question? Remember, guys, address me first.
Yeah, I am saying, uh, thanks. Just wondering when they're gonna start moving in on that stadium deal. And their smarter heads prevailed. If we could use what we got instead of looking for the, you know, pipe dream that they all want to have. You know, and I'm pretty sure I read something about the governor went to Vegas last weekend to speak with the Las Vegas Sports Entertainment. They'll probably try and get some ideas. So, you know, hopefully comes of it because the longer we wait, the worse it's gonna get. You know, and I think there's a lot of opinions out there that do say that if you guys had just cut off the top half and use the bottom half, I think we'd be in pretty good shape until they decide what they want to do.
Roger, thank you, sir.
Hey, board members, any other questions? Okay, seeing none. One thing that I have is we still got a huge concern about insurance rates increasing. It's definitely impacted many town home associations in Pearl City and of course the whole island. And with the latest two disasters that occurred in Florida, the insurance companies got hit again with billions of dollars. What's it gonna be like next year when they go back and review policies? I'm greatly concerned. We definitely need the governor to continue to work emergency actions on this. Other than that, you know, you'll probably hear from our legislators too.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Other than that, any questions from the virtual seeing none community? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving on, the Department of Education, Mr. Hapkin. He's not here, okay? Moving on to the Department of Transportation, Casey, are you online?
Yes, I am, sure.
Hundred percent. Casey is always there. All right, Casey, over to you.
Share my screen here. Good evening, Chair Veray, members of the Pearl City Neighborhood Board, KCR from the State Duty Highway Division. At last month's meeting, I mentioned I received an email from Senator Alafonte about a damaged fence under the H1 Bida near the Costco Logistics Building. During my field inspection this morning, I noticed our while maintaining school had repaired the damaged fence. Also, at last month's meeting, I mentioned I received an email from Senator Alafonte about cutting back the overgo vegetation along Kamakamea Highway from Honomono Street to Po'ouhoni Street. This morning, I saw our maintenance crew cutting back the overgo as your post of Honomono Street. And they did cut back the overgo near the Waialo Zippies and the H1 Overpass as your post Po'ouhoni Street. At last month's meeting, there was a concern about the grade differential at the intersection of Koala Street for the new signalized left turn lane. Yes, there is a grade differential due to the existing drainage inlet located in the median where the new left turn lane will be installed. We are working with our design consultant to adjust the situation. And finally, at last month's meeting, there was a request to extend the newly installed white flexible linear post to prevent the continuation of queue jumping from the true lane into the second left turn lane. And at last month's meeting, there was a request of extending the first left turn lane closest to the median guardrail. I'm still working with our traffic and design branches to see if extending the left turn lanes and the flexible delineators will cause any safety or operational concerns. I will need to report back at next month's meeting. This concludes my report. I can take any questions at this time. Thank you.
Yeah, Casey, thank you very much for clearing up the vegetation along Kamakamea Highway for a lot of our disabled and people that walk that route. Board members, any questions for Casey? Go ahead, Dan.
Yes, I, I think, you know, measures to, to allow buses to cut into the left turn lane, you know, Cam Highway onto, what is it, Acacia short circuit, that I think that would be a, you know, a high, a high priority. Basically, you gotta let, you gotta let the bus in. You know, you create a transition area where you, you, you just don't go there. If you go there, you get sighted. Police is there and, but the bus can short circuit that, that long left turn line, lane.
So it's an issue, you're concerned that you would allow the buses to cut in? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, right. So that they, they can, they can cut in early. So that they don't have to wait in line like everybody else.
That's a good point. I would discuss it with our traffic branch.
Thank you, Dan. Any other question? Okay, and.
I guess you were cutting off or you're frozen.
Hi, great evening. Guard, so now we have a new, this, Stephen.
Okay, enjoy this, enjoy this lax period right here until January kicks in. Rodney, what you got?
During the interim, we use this time to really expose that didn't. It's for different types of things in the Palisades. Emergency, so that conversation continues. We've also had meetings with the school area principals in Pearl City. As it want to go to the board or to the general public, you can always reach out to any one of us and share your suggestions and thoughts. Session does start the third Wednesday in January, so there is still some time to draft up bills and resolutions.
We're gonna be pretty busy that November meeting because we're in December.
And your advocacy and your testimony, so we appreciate that because that does help move bills and ideas along, especially as they pertain to Pearl City. So thank you again for your support.
Yeah, great track record last year. Okay, any hands up from virtual, anybody from the community? All right, Senator, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Yep, thanks.
Okay, moving on to Senator Henry Aquino. His representative should be there. They, they sent the report.
Hello, Chair.
Hey, Nate, how you doing?
Hello, Chair. So I believe, like you said, we did, we did give out the report. And I think that's it really. If you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Okay, we got your report. I forwarded it to the board members. Any question for Senator Aquino's office? Okay, seeing none. Okay, moving on. Representative Grant Sakayama, welcome.
Hi, good evening, board members. Just a few things to report. I would like to thank the board members for attending last week Saturday's Friends of Sunset Memorial Cemetery meeting at the Wai'au Park, I thought was a, a great meeting. And there seemed to be a, a, a good plan for moving forward on the plans for the cemetery incorporating possible, possibility of solar panels along the cemetery edge. Also, the fact that Friends, thanks to Chair Veray, have received two grants. One, $5,000 from Alexander Baldwin, another $5,000 from Hawaiian Electric. So I think that's a good start and encourage Friends to apply for state grants and aid for this coming session. And just following up on what Senator Alafonte said about planning for bills in the upcoming 2025 session, assuming the election goes. Assuming the election goes as we hope. What we normally do is also poll the school principals in our respective districts. For example, in my district, I have five elementary schools, a high school and intermediate school. So we ask them for their project, capital improvement project priorities. And we can't fund them all, but we do try and prioritize them based on the specific needs of each school, for example. And, and the other thing we do is monitor funds that have already been appropriated. DOE is working on a, a bus shelter for Highlands Intermediate. To the many students who wait for buses are waiting outside in the open. They don't have a tent or anything. They had a tent, but got stolen. So they're planning, we got $2 million for a pavilion for covered seating area for the students to wait for the buses, and that's in the works. Alisade's Elementary has $4 million set aside for a covered play court with restrooms included. That's also in the works. And Senator Alafonte and I have been monitoring the progress of the contracts as they're being procured for the engineering and designs. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Okay, board members, any questions? Junior, go ahead.
Oh, just about the high school kids waiting for a bus. Sitting, sitting on the yard in a corner, you know, that's who you're talking about?
No, I, I don't about the intermediate.
Or a high school is sitting in somebody's yard on a corner, that's where they wait for the bus?
Well, they do now. It used to be the bus. What we want is the bus to pick them up at the Nakasone Performing Arts Center, the Cultural Arts Center, because that at least provides a sheltered area for them, and that would be ideal. But the problem is trying to get the city bus service to accommodate that request, which so far.
Picking up all millions of people in Kishore Row. Roger, but yeah, it's not, it's not good for the kids. They're sitting on a road, you know, in the sun, rain, they all get wet. Somebody's yard, they're just sitting in their yard. Thank you for your help.
Yeah, I've heard that.
Hey, Dan.
Uh, yes, briefly on the subject of school busing. DOE formally denied my grandson's busing, even though he could ride the Highlands Intermediate Bus. Goes through, goes by the school, the timing, the timing is good. So I have filed a, a formal appeal with the superintendent per the administrative rules. But Representative LaChica's school busing transportation bill sailed through the House, three hearings, but it couldn't even get a, couldn't even get a hearing in the Senate this year. So I'm going to encourage her to, to bring it up again because things like the Nakasone Center, you know, busing to there really, really makes sense. So we need, you know, to force people to get together and be a little creative and think, how can I do it? Not reasons why I can't do it. Thank you.
Good point. Totally agree.
Okay, board members, any other questions? Seeing none, community? All right, thank you very much. Good luck. Okay, moving on. We've got Representative Cory Chun. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair, Board members. You know, I don't want to go over anything more that my colleagues already brought up. So I'll just kind of highlight for our legislative Capuna Caucus, we are currently taking submissions for our bill package for the 2025 legislative session. So we're actually gonna have a meeting on November 1st, I think that's Friday at 2:00 PM. Where we're gonna go over all of the submissions and actually vote on our top five priorities. So that's, you know, you can watch it on YouTube. It's at Capuna Caucus. If you just type that in on YouTube, it should come up to the channel and you can watch it live. But if you would like to submit any ideas, please feel free to contact me. My office number is 5866170 and repjohn@capital.hawaii.gov. Right now, we're actually, at least for a board member, a long question, you know, I just answered in my report. What I'm actually trying to work on is implementation of some of the things that passed this last session. So one of the things I've talked about previously is long-term care. That's something that the Capuna Caucus is very interested in. And we're still waiting for the report to come forward to see what actions we can actually take for next session. And then the other thing is mental health. Since I took office, mental health, especially youth mental health issues. It's always an important issue for me personally, just because our young people have a tough time as it is and just trying to get them the help they need. So one of the things that passed this last session was another easier pathway for social workers, marriage and family therapists and psychologists. And I'm working with DCCA to try to implement that because it's changing the licensing to allow them to be able to bill for their services even though they're pre-licensed. So just trying to increase the access and availability of mental health professionals. So with that, I'll conclude my report and take any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Got a question, Rodney?
Yeah.
Um, so, um, you talked about that long-term care bill that was passed this past session. So how did the funding go with that one?
We're still looking at the funding piece. That's probably like the most difficult part, what type of model. You know, there are some examples from other states, one of them being Washington State, which our Medicaid director is actually from. And that's one of the models where it's kind of controversial, right? Because it's, it's adding on an additional type of fear cost to fund the system, like any type of insurance, right? You need everyone to pay into it. So, you know, because we're, we're kind of a unique, I always say like, you know, Hawaii is very different from the continental US. And trying to take something from another state and just shoehorning it into our policies might not always work. So it's really a matter of looking at how these things would actually impact our state if we tried to implement it. Because the last thing I'd want to do is, you know, set up something that actually makes things worse, right? So carefully trying to evaluate what, what can work in Hawaii and what. what can work in Hawaii and what can't. So that's really where we're at.
Okay, yeah, because I mean, you know, for the last couple, three meetings, you know, we brought up this bill where they were gonna get an extra fifty bucks, which is encouraging, um, but the downside of that, you know, disheartening stuff is, you know, oh, we're still waiting for funding. So, you know, if, if you guys are gonna pass a bill, and you know, why can't it be funded for a good cause? You know, um, so it, it just, it's, makes you wanna say, gee, they can pass a bill, but, you know, they ain't got the money, ain't gonna be funded, so why pass them? So, you know what I mean? It's, it's, you know, it's, it's, I guess the wheels turn slowly, so we just gotta wait. But I hope this one comes through because if anybody deserves the extra copays, it wants.
Yeah, so it was really just to create the state plan, right? Um, that was the first step. And then everything else hopefully comes later on as we evaluate the state.
Okay, board members, any other questions? Hey, Dan.
Yeah, Dan, this is my, uh, personal opinion, but I think more work would get done if, if, um, all legislators were full-time with a, with a modest, uh, salary and a limit on outside employment, kind of like Congress, uh, um, you know, where they have a, their salary, maybe you wouldn't get as much as they do, or maybe, maybe you need more because it's expensive. But then, because the legislature is rushed too often and, and, um, you know, things don't get done and people throw in these, throw in this pile of bills at the beginning and, uh, you know, you don't have time to, to really study them. So that, that's my personal opinion. We'd like you, I would like you to be essentially full-time.
Yeah, and there's been proposals before. I mean, it's, it would be a drastic change because we'd have to amend our constitution, right? To, to do that, so it's not something that the legislature can just, just do without a vote. But, you know, that is something that has been brought up many times and, you know, I think we're gonna continue to look at it because I think some of my colleagues are actually in favor of, um, being a full-time, possibly year-round, so.
Okay, board members, any other questions? All right, um, uh, community questions for Representative Chun? See you none. Cory, thank you so much. Okay, moving on, Representative Trish La Chica, is your representative here?
Um, I'm here for the representative.
Okay, there you are, okay. All right, Aaron.
Uh, Vice Chair, Members of the Board, thank you for having me tonight. Uh, Rep La Chica apologizes for not being able to attend. I will keep it very short with you all. We've been really busy with site visits, um, coordinating with stakeholders to plan our bill package and then also meeting with schools for CIP priorities. Um, as Dan mentioned earlier, we do plan to reintroduce bills relating to the school bus issues that we've been seeing. Um, October is Filipino-American History Month, as Rep reminded you all last meeting. Um, if you would like any more information on this, visit filipinohistorymonth.com for more info and events. And then lastly, I have a follow-up from last month's meeting. Um, Vice Chair Duran asked the following questions, and we followed up with DOE, um, in regards to these. So, the first question was, does the DOE allow school-level purchasing and contracting of school buses, school bus services for student transportation beyond those used for school trips? School or field trips? If not, who or what can the community do to advocate for this? The DOE said that a home-to-school round-trip bus route is very expensive. Schools have only limited funding and spending their funding on bus transport would take away from the funding they use for curriculum, PD, or other activities within the school that could have an impact of larger impact on students. And then, the second question was, what is the DOE's position on staggered school times? And is this something that would be prioritized the next legislative session? Um, this is something that the department has looked at in the past and has the power to do so internally. The department has looked at implementing staggered school times in the past, but however, this must be done in conjunction with what makes sense for each school and their community. Staggering school times would need to be done in discussion with all schools within a complex to think about the safety for all students and the impact of families who may have students that are attending multiple schools. While this might be a viable option for some schools, it's not a solution for all schools. Um, that was the answer that we received. If there's any follow-up, I'm happy to do so. And if there are any other questions, please let me know and I'm happy to pass them along, but that does conclude my report.
All right, Aaron. Aaron, thank you very much. Uh, board members, any questions? All right, see you none, community? Here, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to, is Nestor Garcia here for Congressman Case? What's that? Yeah, okay, uh, moving on, uh, Officer the Mayor, uh, Director Gene Bono. So our second director tonight at the meeting. Our Pearl City resident, love him.
Good, good evening, everyone. Vice Chair Duran, Chair Persique, good evening. Members, I'm here to give some highlights of the mayor's October newsletter and update on Hart. Uh, trains are now test-running from Halava to Middle Street. Uh, it's anticipated that the first passenger rides will start in late 2025. Hopefully. The next segment was recently awarded to Tudor Perini at 1.66 billion dollars. It's for the next six new rail stations that will take the guideway to downtown. Uh, and lastly, Lori Kahikina was rewarded with, uh, a new contract till January 1st of 2028. The city also unveils their new respite in Abala. It is for the vulnerable homeless individuals. Uh, it's located at 445 North King Street, and it's meant to provide a safe space for the homeless who need medical attention in addition to, uh, reducing the strain on EMS and emergency resource, resources across the island. It consists of thirty-two medical treatment beds, thirty tiny homes that allow homeless to actually stay there, be safe, get taken care of, hopefully find a new place or a new way to, not become homeless. Uh, there has been upgrades to the Department of Medical Examiner's space. It was for a 5.9 million dollar renovation, for a new autopsy station, upgrade to the lighting, HVAC system, security, in addition to offices and refrigeration spaces. And Dr. Kobayashi finally got his deputy medical examiner, uh, and her name is Dr. Sasha Breland, who comes from District of Columbia with very much a lot of experience. Palama Beach Park had their second life, uh, lifeguard station that allows the lifeguards to have better coverage for the entire Kailua Beach area. I think they only had one that required over a mile of coverage. So they, they have better coverage now in Kailua. And lastly, Waikiki Shell is shutting down for improvements for the electrical system as well as, uh, the addition of additional space for movable seating and improved drainage. And it plans to reopen back in, hopefully by April of next year. All right, moving on to follow-up questions regarding, uh, pet chickens from a resident in Aha'apu Street. HPD did go out and check on October 10th, 12th, and 14th. Uh, they went between the hours of 8:00 AM to 12:34 PM. Officers did not see or hear chickens or roosters during their checks. Uh, they asked constituents to call 911 when there are violations. And DPP is still trying to research, uh, their portion and will respond back next month, or the next board meeting. Member Heidi asked about concerns of the speed limit along Waimano Home Road. DTS says, under the Complete Streets project, the speed limit along Waimano Home Road was assessed and is proposed to be lowered at thirty miles per hour. Between Komomai Drive and Ho'omalu Street, the change will be implemented with the Department of Design and Construction upcoming rehab streets project. The current established speed limits along Waimano Home Road were based on the classification context of the roadway and surrounding development. Waimano Home Road between Nohilani Street and Komomai Drive is classified as a minor arterial and is primarily a four-lane roadway with two lanes in each direction with limited driveway access. The speed limit for this portion is currently established at thirty-five miles per hour. However, the speed limit of twenty-five miles per hour is in effect in the school district where children are present between Nohilani and Ko'omalu Streets. A'aleh Street between Moanalua Road and Komomai Drive is classified as a minor collector and is appropriately designated with a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit. Do you have any?
Heidi, do you have a response?
You can always ask me afterwards or send me an email for any follow-up. Thank you, Heidi.
Yeah, the one thing that, yeah, Director, one, one thing that you didn't mention, that you were going through the whole check-off list on what they evaluated. I didn't, I didn't hear you say in that evaluation, the number of pedestrians with families walking their kids to school. Was that on the checklist?
There was not on the checklist.
I think that was an oversight.
Number of children crossing.
Yeah, yeah, because, uh, the, the, the reason why, I think Heidi brought up, there was concern that the families are walking their kids along Waimano Home Road, and all it takes is just one bump extra and that car jumps the curb, knocks them out at thirty-five miles an hour.
See if we can get statistics for that.
Yes.
That's gonna be a need for someone to actually monitor, uh, the crossing during the.
Who is Heidi?
Yes, member.
So I know that we do a lot of this based on statistics and accidents that have already occurred, which is unfortunate because we're putting our kids and our families at risk by not proactively looking at these problems when residents repeatedly bring it up. And I know that, I think it was this past week, there was actually an accident at the corner of Waimano Home and Komomai. And as far as I know, it was not reported, where a driver coming out of Palisades and turning down Waimano Home Road struck, um, a child, a person who appeared to be a high school student who was biking up the hill. And after stopping and checking on this person, the child continued up the hill on the bike and the car continued down the hill. And I don't know that there was any report filed. So these incidents do happen, but we don't have the statistics because there's an embarrassment, there's this, you know, like, oh, I'm fine, I'm fine, I just want to get out of here, I don't want any more attention. Obviously, he wasn't hurt badly. Thankfully, he wasn't hurt badly, but it did occur and it's not part of any of the statistics that we have.
Let me find out if DTS can do something about that. Okay. And lastly, Vice Chair asked about the update on, uh, Japanese peace bill. Uh, DPR responded that they are working with the Navy and Pearl City Neighborhood Boards, and there is going to be fumigation repair and repainting on the peace bill that's going to be completed December 7th of this year.
Yeah, Director.
DPR intends to continue to work with the Navy and the board for future inspections and repairs.
Yeah, Director, you got news that I don't have, and I'm the one leading that effort.
Well, that, that's, that's, uh, that is the park's response. So if you need.
Director, Director Thielin has our, from the Pearl City Neighborhood Board, and, uh, I'm waiting for a response. I was, we got the Navy standing by. And that we just need to wait and, uh, that key, the key timeframe is around eighteen November. We need to, we need to know for sure that we got an approval to do it. There was concerns that it's considered a work of art and the city's required to actually contract it out. That's, that's what I was told.
Okay, so November eighteen was.
I think that's a Saturday.
Yeah.
That's a Saturday we're gonna do it.
I'll talk to Director Thielin tomorrow.
Well, thank you for bringing that, bringing that up, because I'm just waiting for an answer. Board members, any other questions? Wait.
That, um, chicken please, it's on in our Palisades.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, my friends please, um, said the cops went up there on Friday. They said they gave a guy one, get rid of his chickens. Then they can have two, but no, no, makes sense. Times you guys do your guys surveys, eight o'clock to twelve o'clock, the chickens is not throwing at them. The guy told you the chickens waking him up at two in the morning, three, four in the morning. By eight o'clock, twelve o'clock, the chickens is quiet. How many chickens? And, I don't know, plenty of other stuff you guys do, not you, bro, you know, surveys like that, always eight, twelve. Crime, looking for crime at the cemetery, always did on survey between eight and twelve, eight in the morning and twelve. They do stuff at night. It's gonna go at a great times. I don't know, it's just frustrating for you when you guys do the survey. Doesn't make sense. I don't know. Just all this thing. Thanks, sir.
Yeah, no worries.
Okay, board members, any other questions? Dan?
Uh, yes, interesting facility that a number of people in Pearl City have asked me about, that they would, uh, ask that the city changes position on the Haiku stairs. Um, with that to the council member too, we, there seems to be a lot of public support for retaining the Haiku stairs. So at the moment, we could hope the, hope the, uh, stairs fans win in court or, or maybe it'll change your mind a little bit. Thank you.
Hey, board members.
Yeah, based on prior neighborhood town halls, the stairs will, the stair will be coming down for safety.
And that is solid direction.
No, there, I think the state, the safety statistics, uh, you might look at again because I think there's far more accidents on the Coco Crater stairs than there are, and evacuations and stuff than there have ever been on, on the Haiku stairs.
That's unreported.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, understood. Member Smith.
Rodney, last question.
Okay, okay. Hey, Mr. Jean, how you?
Yes, member Alvan, how are you, man?
Good. Um, on the Hart thing, um, you know, we talked to Monahan the time they had the transportation meeting. Um, and I reiterated with him that, you know, why couldn't you guys get it done in August? And he asked me, well, why in August? Well, you know, think about it, what happens in August? You know, the kids go back to school. And I remember at one, um, PBS meeting and he, he said that one gentleman from the bus company said that his buses would be ready to roll, uh, when that station was open on Lagoon Drive to do express buses to the university and other parts of town. So, you know, I, I, I think maybe they ought to change their, you know, uh, finish time and maybe get it going in August and that way, you know, maybe it might surprise a lot of people that they actually got it done earlier.
I, I do know that there has been outstanding punch list items that the GC, General Contractor, have to address that were major oversights and that could be. have to address that were major oversights and that could be some of the reason for uh the longer anticipated start. Yeah. Major, major oversight.
Major.
Major.
Okay.
Major.
Okay, go ahead.
You don't know, you guys take it apart.
I'm sorry, my department does not do parks. I am a facility maintenance. Roads, sidewalks, streams.
You can pass on a message.
Oh, yeah, that's why I'm here.
Yeah, you know the um Wipo soccer field?
Wipo soccer field?
Not everybody using what um, when you go in at first left and go up that dirt road, you get like four fields on the left, you gotta go up on
The dirt parking lot.
Yeah, get dust, potholes, you know, but car get bust up every time I go there. Can you guys like pave it or something?
I believe it's too close. That's a DOD uh restriction, uh similar to the restrooms where you cannot put uh doors at the restroom stalls.
No, that's
Yeah.
The parking.
Yeah, it's similar because it's right adjacent to the harbor. There's restrictions in terms, in terms of force protection.
Yeah, you can do something else besides, yeah.
We would have to probably negotiate that with the federal government. They own the land.
No, no, just kidding. All right.
Yeah, yeah. But there, there is a reason why that has not been paved.
So it's never gonna get paved.
It's unlikely to be uncaved. No worries. I've been doing soccer for eight plus ten years refereeing, so we just gotta suck it up and yeah.
Excuse me.
No, I am. No worries. I can, you can yell at me. No worries. Anytime.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, always get the yellow part.
All right, all right, moving on.
Thank you very much.
All right, any questions for the community? Seeing none. Director, thank you so much. Okay, and we are honored today. We have, we've got our council member Val Okimoto here in person. And thank you so much for showing up and thank you so much for the patience. This hasn't been the normal long meeting, but it is long anyway.
Thank you, Chair. I, I, again, aloha, Chair, members of the board, members of the community. Um, how can I follow Director Obano? Right? He's, he's wonderful to work with um on the city level. Uh, I, I'm Councilmember Valakino Okimoto here reporting to you. Thank you for having me. Um, all of you should have received my written report. And I do, I, I've said this before, but you know, Pearl City Neighborhood Board is at the end of the month. These, these reports are made at the beginning of the month. So some of the information you'll see is from like the end of September or it might be outdated. But I will do my best to update you on what's in the report as well as things that have transpired since this was created. I want to mention that in every month we have at our, our full council meetings, before the full council meeting, we have the opportunity to recognize members of the community. And we give honorary certificates. So Pearl City has been um part of the people that have been, we've been able to recognize and honor people from Pearl City. And back at the beginning of September, actually, we had a couple of former Pearl City High School students and they had won some national awards. And so that's in here. You'll see um them in here, Casey and Logan, they're in here. So we're very proud to have them come to the Halle. Other things in the community, the Pearl City Community Church, who we worked really, we work really closely with on a regular basis. And I'm gonna put a plug in for a service um project at the, at the end of my report. But they did reach out to us. It's so wonderful to hear. They have a community um group at the end of each day. I think so, I'm not sure if it's every day of the week, but they have keiki come and they provide like an after school um service for the keiki from LeHua Elementary School. So the church, which they've been wonderful partners with us, they reached out and they asked um my office to, and I to help get the keiki some holo cards because they wanted to take them on a little field trip to try and ride the rail. These, these keiki, they don't have a lot of opportunities to do these types of things. So my office is really great in getting these holo cards for them and I was able to go down and present it to them. And I got, I got invited to dance electric slide, of course, how can I refuse that? So I did that and they actually sent a little thank you follow up um thanking, you know, for the holo cards. So just wanted to let you know that the keiki, of course, as a mom and as a former teacher, I have a special place in my heart. Whenever somebody reaches out for a keiki, I do my best to support that. Um, we did have that as uh, I think it was Member Alwan mentioned, the town hall that we had with, combined with I A A legislators. We had that back in September as well, where we did talk about transportation issues. And as was mentioned, I think Representative Takayama mentioned the wonderful town hall. I have to give really props to your chair. And I know that you guys work so hard. I see you guys out and about coming to these meetings. And Chair Ray brought his own equipment and set it up and we had a really good turnout um to discuss the, the path forward and the goals for the Sunset Memorial. And that was, was it two weeks ago, Larry? I can't, every day runs into each other. So thank you for doing that. And I do want to thank, I know they, they're not here, but our state legislature, they worked hard to pass legislation on their part. We were stuck at the city of what we could do because of the ownership. And we know that there are parts of the cemetery that were city roads and some that were state. So we were able to take, take care of some things with DCCA because of that. Um, just for some legislation, before I do that, I, I do want to put a plug in. So Pearl City Community Church, we are joining them again every, I think, quarter. We join them for a bike path cleanup. So my office and I would wake up really early and if I'm five minutes late, they're gone. So at seven thirty, they meet um and we meet at the Pearl City Community Church. If any of you would like to join us, we join, we help them clean the bike path behind um the LeHua Elementary School. And like I said, I've come at seven thirty five before they're out. So I try to get there early. And if you'd like to join me, we will be there this Saturday at Pearl City Community Church to do that. Some legislative issue, uh some legislative updates. We um, and again, my district spans from Mililani all through I A A. And I will say that across the board, there are some issues that have been brought um on repeated levels. And one of it, which we talked about was the e-bike um issue. So I am happy to report that back in September, actually, in um full council, we were able to pass, I was able to introduce a resolution, Resolution twenty four dash one nine nine. And that was to address the, the e-bike um concerns that we have in the community. And that was able to pass. So it's now gone through and it's, it's urging the state legislature to take an aggressive look at how we can address the e-bike situation. The city's, Puliana is a little bit different, it's limited. But my resolutions pretty much stated the things that we were hoping the state would look at, dealing with classifications, clarifying, you know, who can ride the e-bikes, what, the speed limits and all that. So from that resolution, actually, there was um a task force that was created by the administration. So the mayor's office actually created a task force and the Department of Transportation Services today gave a report in one of our committees to what this task force will be doing. So the hope is, based on the things that have come through the Resolution twenty four dash one nine nine, as well as a Bill fifty two that I think um Councilmember Dos Santos Hammond Topola introduced, we're hoping to get legislation prepared by the end of November so that when January comes, the state legislature has a, has an idea of what they can do on their end to address this concern. And another um resolution um that I was able to spearhead and introduce was Resolution twenty four dash two four two. That actually went through committee hearings today. This week is actually committee hearings week. So if you would like to tune, tune in, join in, we're on um a level. And twenty four dash two four two is addressing the homeowner's insurance um increases that have been pretty, pretty um you know, they've skyrocketed unreasonably. And I did share, I had a constituent from the I A A area as well as other parts of the district. But one constituent specifically shared their, their situation where their insurance is, is increasing by a hundred sixty five percent. Where the premium was at four hundred eighty thousand per year, it's now going up to the end of next year at one point three million. And by the end of twenty twenty six, about two point five million, their monthly is increasing by twelve hundred dollars. So really urging again the state legislature, as on the city level, we don't address this. But this is probably gonna have to go to the state as well as to the federal. But I just want you to know that these concerns are not left unheard from my office and I. And we're really working hard to see what we can do to aggressively, or to get encouraged the legislature to aggressively address this issue because it's impacting all of us really. Um, other than that, we do have committee hearings this week. Like I mentioned, tomorrow we have zoning and actually on Thursday, the Public Safety Committee that I'm the chair of, we are having a couple of measures, but also having um the EMS, emergency um medical services come into an info briefing. If you'd like to tune in into that and listen, I have asked them to come and give reports on their closures that have been in the news as well as an update on the billing. The billing system got transferred from the state to the city. And I had some questions I want to follow up on that to make sure that that's being done properly. If you could mark your calendar for November seventh, that's our next full council meeting. Usually we have it on Wednesdays, but because of the election day, which is on Tuesday, our full council meeting will be on the seventh, which is a Thursday. And in that hearing, if you could, I would really encourage you to submit testimony for the Resolution twenty four dash two four two that I just mentioned, which talks about the increase in the homeowner's insurance. So that would be really helpful. I know that this is a concern again that's been brought to my attention on multiple levels. Other than that, I know I went past my time, but I would be happy to take questions.
Thank you, Val. Great updates, all important bills. And we appreciate you representing us and getting those through and we're gonna follow up. Hopefully, uh, some of us here will provide testimony, but you'll get something from the Pearl City Neighborhood Board.
Thank you very much. And if you can be there, either in person or on Zoom to testify, that would be great. But if not, I, I appreciate, you know, if the written testimony could be submitted.
Okay, board members, any questions for council member? Go ahead. Rodney, Rodney.
Um, Councilman Okiporo, what is the basis for the insurance increases? How do they go about and substantiate the kind of percentages that they're bringing up?
Yes, that's a good question. I, I honestly feel that especially after Lahaina, that was, that was the, for our state, that was in the premise of, you know, them having to increase a lot of their rates. But this is a nationwide problem right now. Certain areas are considered flood zones. You know, Florida is gonna see an increase now after this, the major natural disasters. So that's really where it stems from. When the natural disasters happen, the insurance companies then have to address their needs. And, and every, in, in preparation for um projected or anticipated natural disasters, they then do that. And I, I'm not an insurance expert. I know that the assessments are one thing and the insurance rates are a different thing. And I just know that there, right now, across the board, all homeowner associations are, are nationwide are being faced with this dilemma.
Thanks.
And thank you. And I, and for us again, I think it's, it's really became an issue after the, the hyphares.
Hey, board members, any other questions?
I know that um member, board member Smith asked about the Haiku stairs. And I, I, I believe Director Obano mentioned
Dan.
He answered your question, but I know you had asked me to also answer. I, I think other than what the, the director stated, this is something that's not just, um, and I understand, I actually have friends that have emailed and texted me and they love it. I personally haven't ever climbed it, but I understand that the beauty of it. I think the things that have been put into consideration to make the mayor make his decision was the fact that people's homes are being trespassed um to get to. And it was breaking into private property and the stairs, from my understanding, that's um part of the reason. And while I do understand that, that there may be, you mentioned that Coco Head has had more rescues. I don't know the statistics, but I know that in talking with HFD, and I myself went and asked the department to let me see their helicopter um services. They, we flew over it and they talk about how it, it is dangerous and they have had to rescue people up there often. So there are other factors, but I know when the mayor made the decision, the community and that, and that's not our district. But I know that the, the residents there really were um concerned was that people's homes are, they were trespassing. People's properties were being trespassed to get to the stairs. And unfortunately, that was breaking into private property. And then on top of that, things were constructed on, on the path that were not permitted or allowed to be there, from my understanding.
Right, but the, but, but, but there is a, there are routes to get to the, the base of the stairs without uh going on private property. There is, there is some public, there is public land. Now, some of it's maybe controlled by DHHL and so there, but there are routes there. Um, I mean, it could, I, I think it'd be great to, a tourist attraction. I have never been up the stairs myself. I have been near it, up the Moana Loo Valley, over the uh, by the tunnels, which is a, not that difficult to root. And uh, there, yes, I would say the rescues on the Moana Loo side. But anyway, anyway, I you, you know, just express an opinion and
I appreciate it.
In fact, a, a city employee brought that up to me uh this morning and said, I, I wish I could go on the stairs.
Like I said, I actually have
And, and
host friends that, that
And you, you You charge a fee and you get gobs of insurance and uh, you know, anyway.
Thank you for sharing.
Okay, thanks, Dan. Junior, you got something?
Um, yeah, I don't know what. Plenty places, guys. Trespassing other people's, not, not only over there, you get problems with the residents, people going to their residence like that. It's just an excuse, sir. No, you plan each trails out there that people trespass and cross too, that had complaints before on a wheelie or whatever, you know? So, but when you have something done, I think you done fast. A lot of stuff take long times, I don't know, but.
Okay, well, we're, we're done with those stairs. It ain't at Pearl City. And I haven't heard anything about Manana Trail yet, except uh people are cleaning it, which is great. We, we got volunteers that go up there and clean trash and everything else. Rodney, are you trying to ask another question? You, you know, we're half hour over.
Now, I'm here, Victor. It's all Rodney. I wasn't gonna ask you this, but I got it. Um, and this is based on what happened to the folks down on Noilani. Um, I see a lot of times where you guys uh pass judgments on people who have litigation. Uh, the last one was a twelve million dollar settlement uh with uh, you know, officer incident out in Makaha. And then you guys are about ready to judge on another million dollar settlement with the up in Nu'au'ano. So my question is, do the folks at Noilani have to go to litigation to get any justification for what went on with their incident?
Are you talking about the flood?
Flood, yes, exactly.
So that would have been a great question for Director Obano, actually. But I, I will do my best to explain from the knowledge that I, the information that I have when it was brought to my attention. And we did have a meeting, was it over a year ago?
Yes, we had multiple meetings.
We did, yeah. And I do appreciate, and, and I can totally empathize. From my understanding, I, I did follow up with Director Obano about, so I saw a news story about it continuing to be an issue. The city since that time has um done their best to make sure that our city drains are being cleared. That's case specifically, again, I'm Chair of every, you can correct me. From my understanding, once it went into litigation, there's not, like, there wasn't anything that I or the city could do. The, the residents took it to, I guess, the insurance and then the insurance worked on. I think there was a case made. So it's now litigation and there is nothing that I personally or even the city could do. It's, it's now left in that, in that state.
Yeah, Rodney, it's in litigation and really we, we shouldn't put our council member in that situation. So we're, we're gonna hear, we'll see.
But I will say, sorry, Chair, I will say that when the news stories came out, I did see the concerns rightfully so the residents are worried about if the flooding happens again. I, I actually saw Director Obano and I texted, I, I saw him and we texted back and forth. I said, can you tell me what's happening to ensure that this is not, that that doesn't happen again? So just to let you know that, I'm really grateful that I can work really well with the administration and the departments. And, and you guys are always at the forefront of our minds. I, I actually ran into Matt Sam's club and I said, hey, Gene, what's happening with the floods? Are your drains clean? Because I don't want anything that this to happen again. So.
So, so Rodney, we hope that the right thing is done by the city. Unfortunately, it took litigation to do it. I'm confident that's gonna, we're gonna see this again. We'll see a good end to the story. All right, uh, any other questions? Heidi, go ahead.
Not a question, but just a comment. I wanted to say thank you for your part in getting some funding for the Pearl City District Park Gymnasium roof. Um, definitely needed to get a new roof on there to prevent the lake from forming on the courts when it rains. Um, and I'm just wondering if it's on the radar to um fix the floor once the roof is fixed. So the damage was done.
And you guys may not know this, but I was a teacher at Highlands Intermediate for over, over seven years and I used to play basketball. So after school, we played basketball, me and my colleagues. Principal Hoffman was one of them. And I was really shocked to hear what had happened to the roof. That was a lot, late um budget add-on for us, but we were able to get it. Um, and the, the hope was to prevent us to have to then have other repairs that will need to be done. I will look into it. Um, my team has been working closely with the Department of Parks and we want to make sure that we get the roof first of all. Because if we fix, if we don't, if we fix the floor but not the roof, it's not gonna make any sense. So thank you um for recognizing that. And if you guys know of any other repairs in any other community centers or the parks, please let my office know. Many times we don't know until somebody tells us. Thank you.
Okay, Val, thank you very much. Community, any other questions? Seeing none.
Thank you.
And thank you, thank you for taking time and thank you for being so responsive, you and your staff, between Vice Chair and myself and some of the board members. You guys are always very quick. The next day, what an answer. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on. We've got uh Joint Base Pearl Harbor, the dynamic duo leadership from Protocol and, and NAFAC here to give us the updates. Thank you.
Not all. Good evening, Chair.
Good evening, Chair. This is, I'm gonna fix this, I'm sorry. I'm an old rock and roller, so I have to have the mic right in my mouth. You can tell, so experienced, right? 30 years as a Navy musician, I can't even work a mic stand. Uh, good evening, Chair, thanks for the opportunity. Not a lot of news, real news, I guess. You got our full report. I'll highlight some of the highlights, spotlight some of the highlights for you because it's, it's kind of thick. Lots of good news. Uh, the groundwater monitoring last week on the 16th, I believe, that was a great webinar on groundwater, the flow, the model, the things that are going on. That's available on our website, also on the app. Before I forget it, November the 14th has been confirmed as our next open house. It's gonna be at the Hokulani Community Center, which is off of Kamehameha Highway, right there near the Fed Fire Building. I'll send you maps so you can be there. Uh, lots of great news on six and seven, the internal cranes and the ladder and the scaffolding and everything. That maintenance still continues. Tank five, uh, the de-gassing just finished yesterday. Tank six is standing by for the power washing. All we need is the thumbs up for the next three tanks to start that power washing. And one more step closer to being done with some of the tanks anyways, four of the 20. Other than that, the reminder that the app on your phone is available. It's got the dashboard so you can see tank updates daily. If there's a daily update, it goes on there. Right now, the last update was yesterday, the 21st, because I do it. Uh, the website's there with all our latest news. Please download those things so you're aware. And then it's also got our phone numbers so you can contact us for any questions or concerns about the water.
Thank you, my brother. Victor Flit, Naval Facilities. Pearl Harbor Restoration Advisory Board, uh, last meeting was September 25th, went really good. Another meeting coming up is on December 11th, uh, same place, the Oahu Veterans Center. Dry Dock Five, moving forward and on track. We just recently completed the second major concrete pour. That would be the second of nine dry dock floors. And all the other information that you had previously is the same. There's gonna be nine floors out of the completed and we're moving forward to the mission completion date of 2028. So might cut you with that. And HURX almost finished. The hurricane season is between June and November, so we're almost there. We dodged a lot of bullets, but we still prep. The Navy's there to come to the aid of the city and/or the state on request. In the meantime, with the drills, we pray for the best, but we prep for the worst. That's all I have. Are there any questions for myself or my brother?
Okay, thank you. Board members, any questions for the Navy? Hey, Guy, go ahead.
Hey, Victor, you know, thank you very much for the update. And I remember several years back, um, there was a restoration for water cleanup. And that involved like oysters, clams and other shellfish, right? In the, uh, let's see, that park area by the I A S I. Any updates on those things? Cause I don't, it was going really well, that's why.
No, I don't know. We can find out, Guy. Thanks for the question. It's good, I know that we've still got the oyster project over on West Lot going on with UH. That's a return to those small oysters as a environmental project. But what we'll do is we'll look into that and I'll have some answers for you.
Right, yeah, this is on the other side, on the east side. But yeah, that was good work because there was a lot of positive things, especially like, say, for example, like, you know, what they're trying to do with the ginkgo balls in Aloha Canal, right? So, thank you.
Speaking of ginkgo balls, I've got one more. Oh, by the way, LoLima, the 250 Acts of Aloha, which is the Navy has started with act lead and Navy Region. Uh, this bike path cleanup was Saturday. We had 100 Navy volunteers over at the I A Bay State Rec Park. I don't know how many other military folks, because I'm in Red Hill now, I'm not doing that, except for as a volunteer thing. But the, it was a great turnout this last Saturday. The next one, we'll keep you in tune because there's lots of great projects. 250 Acts of Aloha before the next Navy's birthday next year. It's a great thing going on. We appreciate the help. Get in the board yet.
Okay, thank you. And I will keep in contact with you guys for the board. Last week I met with, with Senator Wakai, Senator Kino, and also with Congressman Case's Representative Nestor Garcia to prepare for an engagement with the Navy to discuss our three initiatives that potentially move the Pearl City Post Office, establishing youth baseball soccer fields of Pearl City Peninsula, and also looking at a recreational water activity off of Blaisdell Park. So I would really like you guys to be in that meeting when, when Senator Wakai sets it up. I'm hoping that we'll have leadership there with the Base Commander XO. Cause we definitely want to put some accolades out on you guys for these board meetings. But also this is a win-win for everybody.
Yes, sir. We believe in you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none? You guys take care. All right, moving on. And we've got our Chancellor here for Leeward Community College, Chancellor Carlos Penalosa, welcome, sir. And I'm sorry I couldn't make that, that last event that you had, but Dan represented us.
Hello, members of the board, members of the community, Carlos Penalosa, Leeward Community College Chancellor. I'm passing out some, some handouts on Leeward and I have some back here and I'll send one digitally as well so that I could make my remarks a little bit shorter. We're celebrating a lot of really amazing things. Our enrollment is back up, our in-person presence is amazing. Um, all of our student success metrics are up, our graduation rates persistence. Um, and so we're really just celebrating a whole lot for Leeward. As general updates, I'll let you know that, um, we are in the middle of quite a bit of renovations. We're trying to reduce our deferred maintenance significantly. For the next three years, we have a lot of projects on campus, including right now, the second floor of our library is being renovated. Um, we're redoing the faces on the buildings of the campuses, just bringing back that, that vibrancy to the campus. Um, general, uh, quick updates, Discovery Fair November 2nd, that's a really big event for us. One of the things that we're doing a little bit different, we provide a lot of the workforce to a lot of agencies. I'm also looking for workforce. And so we're actually gonna have a recruitment booth. We're hiring in almost every job category at Leeward. And so for anyone bringing their keiki to Discovery Fair or just wanna see what we're posting and hiring for, please come because we're pretty desperate as well for staffing. So that's Discovery Fair on November 2nd. I want to also tie that at the theater, we have Lisa Matsumoto's Once Upon One Time. And that's happening November 1st through the 3rd. One of those performances is the same day as Discovery Fair Day. It might be a really nice way of spending a full day on campus and, and bringing your whole family. Um, another quick thing, this last month has been super busy. Um, we were recently re-designated a National Center of Academic Excellence in Cyber Security. Uh, and so for cybersecurity, which is really critical right now, we have an amazing program. It's booming. You have some information on that on this page. Um, and the last bit that I'll share is that last month we celebrated Anapici Month, which is Asian American, Native American, Pacific Islander, uh, serving institutions. Leeward Community College is one of very few colleges in the nation that qualifies as an Anapici-serving institution, Hawaiian-serving institution, minority-serving institution. And so out of all of the, so out of about 5,000 higher education institutions nationally, about 200 of us qualify. We're one of 60 recipients of a pretty large, uh, US Department of Education grant that is helping us address mental health for our student in our communities. And it's in partnership with UH West Oahu. We were just in DC presenting our work. Um, and I have to say that it really caught everyone's attention, what we're doing right here in our campus. Um, and so we're being invited to do a lot more of this sharing and telling so that other colleges in the nation can take on what we're doing as well. So I guess I'll stop here because I know it's a little bit late, but happy to answer questions.
All right, Chancellor, thanks for the update. All right, finally, go ahead.
Chancellor, the high Hawaiian population that you have reported here, I'm curious to see who at Kamehameha Schools, uh, who's your liaison for, uh, helping with that? Transfer of those students, um, being on the Leeward side or central, you know, Leeward Community College, but the central location. Um, and then also how it works with regard to some of this, um, funding that comes from scholarship funds that would be coming from the estate.
So we do, we have different liaisons with Kamehameha Schools depending on what it is that we're doing. They do support us through scholarships as well as additional resources for our campuses. Uh, we have strong ties for our YNI community with our YNI Moko Education Center. Here in Hula, we have additional resources. Um, I don't know how many of you have recently gone, but we've established our Kipuka Native Hawaiian Center. And Kamehameha Schools has been very supportive of getting our 13th year program up and coming. And so that program allows for Native Hawaiian students to come in their first year to college. And if they haven't been able to put through, say, their FACS application for financial aid, this program will actually cover that financial aid for that year and in beyond. In addition to providing us with resources for peer mentors, advisors and tutors at the center to support our students. Like I said, our direct connection to Kamehameha Schools will vary depending on the various programs that we have. Uh, we feel very fortunate of the relationships that we have, um, because we get a lot of support. We have a pretty high Native Hawaiian population, many of which actually do come from our YNI, uh, side of the island. Yeah, yeah.
All right, great. Board members, any other questions? Okay, and I want a question for you, sir, uh, in regard to, uh, if the Pearl City Neighborhood Board wanted to have a special meeting, is there a charge at your location for that?
So we do have procedures. Oftentimes it depends on the time of day, uh, because we're usually, uh, general business hours. If it's during business hours, we don't have or incur much cost. During the off hours, like in the evenings, we would have to bring in security and additional staffing and we may pass on those expenses.
Okay, yeah, I'm looking for a venue because the city has asked me for the Complete Streets Initiative. They want to provide another update for Pearl City, but it's kind of like a town hall.
Yeah.
Uh, they didn't want to do it at the Pearl City Board Meeting. They wanted strictly of, of a venue around the area and not just looking at parking and the ease and have something central.
I, I think you know the Chancellor, we could, we could, uh, we could look into possibilities.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for letting me plant that seed, sir. Okay, Dan, go ahead.
Um, I just wanna, I, I really like your CTE, uh, things. And, you know, with all the broadband infrastructure money coming in, there's gonna be a need for technicians. And some of these things like fiber optic splicing thing aren't, aren't that hard. And, you know, and I have some fancy degrees, but I also an FAA certified mechanic, so. That bridging of academic and practical stuff is, is really very important.
We're, we're actually part of a national group that's working on the micro credentialing spaces like this where short-term training can get you entry-level jobs. And we could build those on a stackable, stackable means so that there is growth. But getting folks trained in just a matter of weeks to get critical jobs that folks, we need.
And how's the CDL for busing?
So I'm recruiting in all spaces. And one of the areas where we've had difficulties hiring is, uh, in the trainers or the bus driving program. Because those need to be not only licensed, but also have a minimum number of years, uh, in service. Um, but everything is in place, so we should be announcing the start of the program in the coming weeks.
Good, and I think the military could help too.
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right, any other questions? Okay, seeing none? Thank you, Chancellor.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, Vicki, are you on? I don't think so. Okay, we're gonna move on to our last guest, Arlen. Thank you so much. Hey, hey, Arlen, we went through a lot of pain the last six months on our streets here of border water supply. And you guys did a bang-up job, uh, resurfacing the road. So everybody's happy now.
Uh, good evening, Chair, good evening, board members. No water means report for last month, September. Uh, Border Water Supply is now accepting entries for its 2025 Water Conservation Week poster and poetry contest. Uh, it's open to Oahu students islandwide. These annual contests promote awareness of our island's limited drinking water supply and encourage Oahu's youth to become more water efficient. Uh, the poster contest is open to Oahu students, uh, grades kindergarten through six. And the poetry contest is open to students, grade seven through 12. And of course, they'll be featured on our calendar. Uh, the 2025 contest theme is Worth the Y or VAI. Invites Oahu's youth to creatively express their understanding and appreciation of clean, fresh drinking water as one of our most valuable resources and that we all share responsibility uh, to support efforts to protect its precious and finite water supply for generations to come. Uh, if you'd like more information, uh, the website is borderwatersupply.com/wcwcontest, Water Conservation Week Contest.
Okay, thank you for your update. Board members, any questions? Go ahead, Derek, Junior.
How's it, um, I live on Ooh Hiki Street and my water pressure is like terrible forever. Um, I heard it's gravity fed over there, but, um, you guys check, check that out. Supposed to be like 80, no?
Yeah, we actually have the reservoir right there at, uh.
Yeah, right at the top. I think, I think we're like 22, I think, or else or something like that. Or also maybe 40, but I mean, it's still, if somebody uses other water, it's like horrible. Ooh Hiki Street.
Okay.
Cause I heard that, um, that on a couple of water main breaks and.
Yes.
I don't know if the rocks got inside, but this, you guys said was all good, but.
Okay.
Yeah, the pressure's bad. You can check them out.
We can see.
Right on, thanks, sir.
Rodney, you sure the homeless didn't tap in the line above your house? I mean, Junior? Sorry.
It's getting late, it's getting late. I live below, um, below, um, what is that street? By Y, well, the mall elementary, down underneath, we got a sub site going down. The last block before, um, we go to Noyalani and go up to the sub site, first sub site, the houses over there. The townhouses are behind us. I don't know if you know the area well.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, well, thank you, Arlen. Thank you for the update. Thank you for your patience. Any other questions? Rodney? Okay, we're good. Thank you. All right, moving on. Uh, Tony's not here for Pearl City High School. He didn't have any updates. Uh, Board Administration, uh, everybody got a chance to look at the read ahead for the minutes? Can I get a motion to approve Tuesday, September 24th, 2024 minutes?
Can I just make a quick correction on my name spelling?
Oh, wait till I get the discussion.
Under the board members present, it's got the vowels transposed and my first name, H F D E.
Yep, we'll get that corrected. Okay, so we got the first is, uh, is Rod, who's, who's first? Okay, Cooney's first, you second? Okay, Rodney, any other discussion changes? Nope, seeing none? All right, no objections, the minutes are approved. Okay, uh, meetings by other members. Uh, Dan, I want to personally thank you for backing Guy and I up. You know, and Guy, I don't know if you heard, the next meeting for the Pearl Harbor Restoration is right on 11th of November and it's right on conflict with the Lions Club meeting. So you won't be able to make that one, correct?
I'll try and, um, attend the rapid actually on that one.
Okay, so Dan, you think you take the next one if Guy can't make it?
Yes, I should be able to. And by the way, um, I'll try to be brief. The, the message I got from attending it is there are areas of, plenty of areas in Pearl Harbor that are perfectly safe to use. And, um, your, the idea about, you know, recreation and stuff is definitely worth pursuing.
Okay, Dan, you got any other meetings you want to talk, that you attended? Okay, all right, we're good. We're gonna move on. Uh, in closing, uh, the Pearl City Neighborhood Board 21, next board meeting will be both virtual and in-person facilitated via WebEx here at Mo'alelani Community Center on Tuesday, November 26th, uh, 2024. Pearl City Neighborhood Board 21 meetings are broadcast on Focus 49 and aired the second Saturday at 6:00 PM and the first and third Friday at 1:00 PM. And just as a heads up, we will be in recess for the month of December. And just as a heads up, we will be in recess for the month of December and then January, we kick back in working with the legislature. So again, uh, thank you all very much and this closes our meeting.